I forgot. At this time, I call the regular monthly meeting of the County Commission to order. We have with us tonight Reverend Randy Knapp. To give all the invocation. Reverend Knapp here. I ask the County Attorney if he will give the invocation and followed by the play of allegiance to the flag by Commissioner Henderson.
Most gracious heavenly Father, we again thank you for this opportunity to come together, do the business for the folks of Lincoln County. We ask that you give each one of us your wisdom and your guidance to make the best decision for the folks of Lincoln County. We ask that you continue to watch over or protect this body as we go out and each and every person who is here this evening, we ask that you protect them and feed them safely home as well. We ask that you guide our country and direct this country to do what is best for you, Lord. In Jesus Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Blessed are we to defy the United States of America, in its sovereign government, with its saints, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You notice that Commissioner Clyde is not here tonight. He had a medical procedure at the hospital today in Augusta. And he just texted me a few minutes ago and said he was on his way home and everything came out alright, but let's continue to remember Commissioner Clyde in our prayers. We have the item four is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion that we approve the previous minutes as presented to you?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion is by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson. Any discussion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item five is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion that we approve the agenda as presented?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Departmental reports. Item six A is the Office of Emergency Services Director Casey Broom.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, as always, it's an honor and a pleasure to be here. We have my written reports, and then I do have one item up for discussion during my report, if there are no questions.
Before you go to that, is any questions to Commissioner? I mean to Director Broom on his departmental report that was presented to you. If not, you may proceed.
Yes, sir. So it came to our attention on short notice that our agreement with CBA of Savannah, which is the collection bureau that handles our accounts that are 120 days plus overdue, is their Savannah office is closing. And we have a new, it's the same agreement, but under a new address at the Tifton CBA, and they've asked us to renew or not to re-sign the agreement that's been in place for many years. And we would like the Chairman to be able to sign that pending after approval from the County Attorney with some changes to the verdicts that these passed forward.
Okay, you have it in your books. The, I need a motion to approve the agreement for the collection service EMS and the business associate agreement. Is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henderson made motion, second Commissioner Collins, any discussion? The County Attorney, I think, wants to address something.
Just a couple of minor matters, Mr. Chairman. One is, as there are two separate documents, I would like a reference in one document at least stating that both of the documents will be read together as one contract. And the second thing, Chairman, is I would like to make clear on the venue, in the event any litigation were to be brought, I would ask that that be specifically mentioned as being in Lincoln County.
Okay, you heard the request from him. We have a motion and a second to approve with the additions of what he said once it is presented back to us. Any discussion by the Commission? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item number six B, Recreation Department Director Glaze.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, you have my written report in front of you. If you have any questions.
Okay, you got the report from Director Glaze at the Recreation Department. Any questions to him on the report? If not, we accept your report as given to us.
Is it okay to get excused from the meeting?
It'd be fine.
Mr. Chairman, if I might.
Hold on a minute, Director Glaze, Commissioner Collins.
Could you submit something in writing, sir?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Six B right here.
Oh, not bad. Okay. Very good, thank you.
Okay, the next one is item six C, Finance Director, Director Ernie Dawes.
Chairman and Commissioners, you have my printed reports. I don't have anything else to add to the financials. I do have another comment, but I'll see if there's any questions on the financials.
Any question, Director Dawes?
Commissioners, we have discussed in the past that we got a new accounting system you approved last year, and we are going live on the core financials, which is our accounts payable and our accounts receivable next week. So we did the final data pool, we will be going live with the payroll portion of that program the week after. And then we have a few other smaller modules that will be going live by the end of this month, the first part of March, and then we plan to go live with the Public Works portion of that at the end of May, the first of June. So that project is coming along. They told us they didn't think we could go live before December of this year. The Chairman asked me to make it by the end of the fiscal year, and we're gonna make that deadline.
Okay, sounds good, moving right along.
Questions, Mr. Chairman?
Any questions, Commissioner Henderson?
Are these reports under the old system or?
These reports are under the old system, but I did not realize until today that I made an error when I exported them, and so they got exported in portrait instead of landscape, and I'm gonna resend them to you so you can read them.
Oh, that's one I'm gonna ask.
I've already told him, I mean, I told him today, he might as well not even send me that one, I can take Bob Buckles and magnifying glasses, and he's gonna reprint them and get them right and put them in our box. Okay, moving right along, six D, Public Works Department Director Robbie Seymour.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have my written reports. I don't have anything to add to those unless you have questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those at this time.
Any questions, Director Seymour on his report? There being none, we'll move right along. And item seven, public hearing, is there a motion that we go into our public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried, we in our public hearing, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. The Planning Commission heard the following request on March the seventh, 2022. The applicant is Jeff and Sherry Easter, map thirty, parcel twenty-six, better known as nineteen thirty-five Lewis Family Road, consisting of forty-six point eight acres, currently zoned A1 agriculture. He is applying, they are applying for a special use request to operate a too-long concert event during the month of April and May. This request was heard by my board. My board made a recommendation for approval to the Board of Commissioners to allow up to four events per year, not any specific time in the year, but up to four per year, and that vote was unanimous, Chairman.
Okay, you got the report from the Planning Commission. Is there anyone here that would like to speak against this zone? Anyone that would like to speak against it? Anyone here that'd like to speak for it? We are honored tonight to have one of America's most popular gospel singing groups, Jeff and Sherry, looks like we get a free concert for about fifteen minutes. Okay, there being none. Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission with the approval of special use for Jeff and Sherry, used to map thirty fossils, twenty-six, nineteen thirty-five Lewis Family Road?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is asked second.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. We ready for a good event park, and we ready for some good events, brings people to Lincoln County, helps us with our sales tax and other things, so. Chair, you look so much like your mama sitting on a bike. I'm sorry, I couldn't help but say it. All right, moving right along, y'all welcome to stay, you can leave at any time you want to, but you might wanna stay. Item B, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. The Planning Commission also heard the request from Matthew and Lindsay Ellington, map thirty-seven, parcel zero five seven eight on McCormick Highway, consisting of twenty-seven point nine three acres, currently zoned A3 zoning. It is for actually, for a special use request to operate a Christmas tree farm and an event barn on a portion of the property. The recommendation from the Planning Commission was for approval to the Board of Commissioners, and that vote was unanimous, Chairman.
Okay, we got a, we got an event barn, and maybe we can have some singings in there sometime, too. All right, you heard the request and the recommendation from the Planning Commission on map thirty-seven, parcel zero five seven eight, McCormick Highway, twenty-seven point ninety-three acres, is zoned A3, and the recommendation by the Planning Commission is approval of this special use request. Is there anybody here that would like to speak against this special use request? Anybody against? Anybody for it? No use in you talking, I guess. Y'all are Mr.?
No, right here.
Oh, okay.
This is Mr. Ellington here, center side row.
This is Matthew and Lindsay Ellington. Okay. Good to see you. I told somebody one time for you, might not wanna speak for you, got it going your way right now, so. All right. All in favor? I got to have a motion, huh?
Yes, sir.
Okay. There are motions, we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission on the special use for Mr. Ellington.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
That's second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. The third and final was heard by the Planning Commission on March the seventh, 2022. Applicant is James A. Gaston, map forty-five, parcel zero nine five, better known as eleven twenty-nine Fortson Road, consisting of eleven point nine acres, currently zoned A3. It is for, his request is for a special use request and a variance. This is a twofold, I think we had one of these last month as well. The special use is to be able to operate a business and have a residence on the same parcel of land. The variance is for a setback variance to operate a quail farm. The current setback is two hundred feet. He is requesting a setback variance of a hundred, so he'd still be a hundred foot off of any boundary that he has. And the recommendation from my Planning Commission was for approval of both, unanimously, Chairman.
Okay, is there anyone here to speak against the special use of the variance? Anyone here to speak in favor? Y'all are?
Mr. Gaston, yes, sir.
Yes. Well, we all like quail. I think that's what you do, and you're gonna have some quail and quail eggs and... You can look at me and Mr. Jackson, we like to eat.
Amen.
Okay, is no one to speak for or against? Is there a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission to grant a special use and a variance on map forty-five, parcel zero nine five, eleven twenty-nine Fortson Road?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Is there a motion that we come out of our public hearing?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is asked second. Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. We are out of our public hearing, we are back into the regular County Commission meeting. Item number eight on your agenda is the Unified Development Ordinance. Mr. Greg Grant, Mr. Grant, you have five minutes to speak to the Commission. And as you speak, I would, I really don't know what Unified Development Ordinance is, so if you'd let me know. Mr. Jackson, keep going.
Those are land, land development ordinance that we passed back in oh-two. My name is Greg Grant, I'm ten fifty-six, Peaster Lane. I can assure you I'm properly nervous because this is a setting I'm not accustomed to. I've been a resident of this county for forty-three years, but still treated as an NFL by some, mainly this government of the lake. I want to thank the other NFLs in the lakefront residential community, also known as the lake people, bearing the tax burden that helps this county survive. Gentlemen, I come to you tonight to discuss the Unified Development Ordinance, or other LDO. As it was passed in oh-two, after research and pulling up in records request, it seems this ordinance was pushed through in a sneaky way. I found no town hall meeting announcements to discuss this with the community, I could only find three small legal notices in the back of the paper. The only headline article announcing this appeared on the day of the hearing. The official reading was suspended. Edgefield County, in implementing a similar ordinance with its residents, notified every resident, every resident. It seems, Mr. Norman, you had a vision and the people's opinion in this county didn't matter. I think they do matter. Anytime you ask people to sacrifice their property rights, the foundation of our liberties, they should have input. The only people who spoke in favor of this ordinance, from all accounts, appear to be no longer living in this county. It also seems that the people that most benefited from this ordinance were land developers, while unnecessary costs were imposed on the residents of this county. If you review the zoning, the county zoning map, it looks like a divide and conquer scenario, nothing like the original map published back in oh-two. It also appears that the county uses discriminatory enforcement of its county codes. Some examples are as follows. An illegal landfill was brought to my attention when I asked Mr. Seymour about this, he stated that he had inspected it himself and didn't see anything. A couple of months later, I returned to his office after seeing satellite photos showing the landfill. At this time, he advised me he had called EPD. I had spoken with EPD also, and they said there had been no other reports about this. So it makes me wonder if what, if anything was truly ever done. It also makes me question Mr. Seymour's credibility. Another example is a tiny house off Bass Road, which is only seven hundred and eighty square feet, which by itself is against county code. Apparently, the owner found a loophole by running a pipe from the tiny house to the top of the hay shed from which it is under. Attaching the two structures technically made it over a thousand square foot. Another issue is I don't believe the hay shed roof pitch meets county code requirements for residents. Although it may be under a hay shed, the residents still live in a seven hundred and eighty square foot tiny house. Finally, last year, you sent out a hundred and fifty notices of violations of people all over this county, violations of society on section eighteen dash nine, eighteen dash forty-seven, and thirty dash seventy-two. Parts of an ordinance you had eighteen years to enforce, but chose to do so during the middle of a pandemic. I also did an open request, open records request to the copies of these notices. When I talked to Mr. Seymour about how I thought this was bad timing, his response was there's nothing in our county ordinance that says we don't like citations during a pandemic. Obviously, these violations upset too many people because in July, the ordinance was changed to only apply to the R and A3 districts. It seems like you know how to play the people. Not to worry, A1 and A2, I'm sure you'll get yours sooner or later. In my opinion, if you're interested in maximizing the welfare of our citizens, the way to do that is to maximize their individual freedom. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. We will take all this under advisement, look at it, and I think the land development laws you talked about was done, passed in two thousand and?
January of oh-three.
January of oh-three is the ordinance that he's talking about, so that's how long ago it's been passed, and why it's up to date beyond me, but anyway. Item number nine is the Georgia Department of Transportation Title VI Plan Director Blom.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Before you, you have a contract for the Georgia Department of Transit. It's a Title VI plan, and we have to do this every three years. And this just says that here in our transit, we do not discriminate if somebody has a barrier in language, we have a card that they will tell us what language they use. And there's also a complaint form and all the requirements that's used for ADA, to make us ADA compliant. And I would just like to ask y'all to allow the Chairman to sign this, and it will be put on the website.
So this is, this is, I understand this is something we do every three years, is that correct?
Every three years, yes, sir.
Okay, and this is for a, I notice it's got all the letters and all the forms and everything that you would need, and that would be housed at your office if that was a complaint?
Yes, sir.
And we meet the guidelines of what the GDOT asked us to do, and we are just making a motion to approve this as amended, it's got some amendments, is that correct?
It has some amendments in the back, but it's the same as they were before, it has not, they have not changed.
All right, I think we've gone over this, and I'll ask for a motion that we approve Title VI plan of the Georgia Department of Transportation for the county's transit vans?
Yes, sir.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
And to give me the authority to sign, have a motion by Commissioner Henderson, is asked second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair hears none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome to leave, too, if you want to. Okay, item ten is the White Clock, White's Clock and Carol's Service, aye, y'all pronounce it? I know this is under Director Dawes, but I think Director Seymour is really who we need, is that correct?
Yes, sir. Director Seymour is gonna speak to it.
Yes, sir. So White Clock has been servicing our clock in the bell tower here in the courthouse for quite some time, as long as I've been here anyway, and that's been a little over nineteen years, so. Anyway, we had some discussion, I had some discussions with them about the clock itself, the inner workings of the clock, this electric motor with gears and windings, and we've had to make some repairs in the past, some of those parts have had to been fabricated because they don't exist anymore. And the clock is getting to the point to where it's gotten to its final leg, it's been here, it's original to this courthouse. And so I came to you, come to you tonight with a proposal to refurbish the clock to a newer electric clock that can be set by an app on the phone or on a web-based portal that can be done. Right now, the way we have to reset it, anytime it's daylight savings or power goes out, we have to wait twenty-four hours and plug it back up, and it's an ongoing issue. The price to do this is eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents. That does not include a crane, which would have to be used to get to the outside of clock face and replace the bearings and the clock hands as well. So I ask approval, this would be paid out of the Sploß Six Courthouse renovation budget, which we just finished Sploß Six, so we have some money left over in that Sploß account. Mr. Chairman, and I ask that y'all approve refurbishing the clock in the bell tower.
Okay, we do have a lot of problems with that clock, every time it stops, so. Lights twinkling go out, we have to go wait twenty, go up and unplug it, wait twenty-four hours, and go back up and start again. One of the arms off the clock over here, it's really very, very old. So you heard the request that I asked for a motion to approve the expenditure of eighteen thousand eight hundred ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents with White's Clock service. Also in that motion, I'll ask that we rent the crane at three hundred and fifty dollars per hour, not to exceed ten hours, which is another thirty-five hundred dollars. Director Seymour said it'd be paid out of special purpose local license sales tax number six. I think y'all often be with it, know about it, I'll ask for a motion that we approve this expenditure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
Second.
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion? Commissioner Tankersley.
Director Seymour?
Yes, sir.
Is this work, got any type of a warranty attached to it of?
I believe that it does. Standard warranty equipment, White says, is three years on all parts and labor. Yes, three years.
So, another question, I assume that if something went wrong a year down the road, that they would be responsible for the crane running, the repair?
If, there's no moving parts really on the outside other than the clock hands, if the clock hands failed, I would assume so, yes, sir. All the other components are accessible through the bell tower, which is, you know, through the attic here. The only thing that they need the crane for is to replace the hands and the bearings on the outside, but yes, I would think if that went bad, then they would have to pay for the crane, yes.
Any other discussions? All in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. All opposed, like, sign, motion is carried. Item eleven is the jail food service contract. Captain Taylor.
Good evening, County Commissioners, Chairman. What we're looking at is the summit food service for the jail, we're looking to modify the contract. They recently did an increase in their food service, we hadn't had an increase since two thousand and fourteen. As everybody knows, food in grocery stores is going up, so the service is going up. It's gonna go up about fifty cent a meal moving forward, breakfast, lunch, and dinner, so around a dollar fifty-three a day, it's gonna go up, about a twenty percent increase.
Okay, we've discussed this. Okay, we discussed this, um, cost, we, there's nothing we didn't sort of expect. I think we've done pretty good not to have had an increase since two thousand and fourteen on the food cost. As Captain Taylor said, it's about fifty-one cents per meal, per day. Nineteen point twenty-nine percent increase. And, um, let me just state this for the record, though, that in the contract, either party has thirty days to terminate the contract. We discussed it and talked with them, they didn't say this, but we assumed that if we did not give them some kind of an increase, they would give us a thirty-day notice, and we don't feel that we could go with another vendor if we could find another vendor for fifty, fifty-one cents. So with that said, and I know, I know we've, we've talked and asked y'all questions, is there a motion that we approve the amendment to the contract and increase it from two sixty to three eleven for food services for the jail, and, and is there a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Tankersley, second by Commissioner Henderson, any discussion on the motion? I would like to say, though, I don't think you said that, I don't hear as well as I used to, but this company provides two people every day to come into the jail to fix two hot meals and a cold meal?
Yes, sir, seven days a week, we're going sixty-five days a year, they provide the staff, they provide the food, and they provide the cleaning items for the kitchen.
So it's not like they bring in pre-packed TV dinners in, they, they do have people at the jail that make this food. And, um, so that's it. All right, any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. Thank you, Captain Taylor.
Thank you.
Item number twelve is water system underpayment, Director Seymour.
Chairman, members of the board, um, the water sales agreement between the city and the county requires a audit to be done for the O and M cost at the city water plant, uh, every year, and, and the outcome of that audit determines, uh, what the per thousand rate that the city charges us for O and M. And it also, uh, tells us in that audit whether we overpaid or we underpaid during the previous year. Uh, this year, we've gotten, um, a letter from City of Lincoln, uh, Mayor McCombs, that we actually underpaid thirteen thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents, and that the rate would be adjusted from a dollar seventy-nine to two dollars and one cent. Um, this, this is a process that goes, happens every year and is always up and down. I think last year, uh, we overpaid by some twenty-five thousand dollars, and I think the city had to reimburse us back the twenty-five thousand dollars, and our rate went down. Uh, this year, it, um, they, they over-adjusted on the rate, so we underpaid, so the rate's got to go up. So, um, it, it's been an ongoing thing, uh, every other year we, we owe and every other year they owe. So, um, I, I bring to y'all that we paid the thirteen thousand eight hundred and eight dollars and twenty-seven cents out of the water fund, and, um, and then the new rate would be two dollars and one cent, Chairman.
Okay, you've heard the request from Director Seymour on the payment to the city on the joint use facility. We won't prolong it, it's thirteen thousand eight hundred and eight dollars twenty-seven cents to be paid from the water fund, and that we accept the new rate of two dollars and one cents up from a dollar seventy-nine. There are motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion, is that second?
I'll second.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the, um, Request for Proposal Twenty-two, day zero zero one, Office of Emergency Service Expansion, Director Seymour.
Yes, sir. On February the eighth, I put out a, uh, we put out an RFP for a Clearspan building, uh, to expand the, um, garage space, uh, at the OES building. Um, we had two responsive bidders, um, to bid on this project, um, H and H Industrial Maintenance at a hundred and thirty-one thousand five hundred dollars, Peak Steel Contractors out of Madison, Georgia, uh, at a hundred and sixty-eight thousand six hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, and the apparent low bidder, um, for this project is H and H Industrial Maintenance. Both of these, both of these, um, bids were responsive, Chairman. Um, so with that being said, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, as I have previously stated, I think we, maybe, I asked for this a little premature. I would like to ask the Commission to lay it on the table for an indefinite period of time for further study and to be sure that we are, this is what we want to do. And I'll entertain a motion that we lay it on the table for an indefinite time.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
I'll second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, motion is carried, and we will go to work on this pretty quick. We won't leave it laying on the table too awfully long. The next item is item fourteen, which is the Georgia Forest Commission. This is also something that comes before this board each and every year, where we pay ten cents per acre for eighty-one thousand five hundred and eighty-four acres annually to the Georgia Forest Commission for fighting forest fires in Lincoln County and working with our landowners on controlled burnings and other things that need to be done related to forestry. This is an eight thousand one hundred and fifty-eight dollar annual fee. It is budgeted in the county's general fund budget. I just need a motion that gives us the authority to pay the Georgia Forest Commission this amount of money, and I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Collins, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, like sign, and the motion is carried. Item fifteen is board appointments. Um, we have discussed that, um, and, and we're not recommending we do anything with board appointments at this time. So we'll just leave, we'll just leave that alone and, and, uh, we'll look at our board appointments later. Any questions? The next item is the item sixteen, which is the hardest one to get a motion and a second on, is there a motion that we adjourn?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Is that second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Henderson, second by Commissioner Tankersley, any discussion on the motion? Chair here is none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
Those in opposed, say aye, and here none, and motion is carried, and we stand adjourned.